K R F A ninety-one point seven Moscow Pullman, K N W V ninety point.
Good evening, everybody. Today is May sixteenth, seven P M. Moscow City Council Regular Meeting. If you'd all arise, I will lead us in a pledge.
For those of you that are out there in attendance, we do have an amended agenda this evening.
Item number six, the public hearing for fee resolution amendment and barrier program fees will not be heard this evening for lack of a public notice and a proper time. So that will be an item we will not do. So I wanted to make that announcement. Now I'm going to move on to Memorial Day proclamation. Memorial Day proclamation, whereas Memorial Day originally called Decoration Day is a day of remembrance for those who died in our nation's service. Whereas Memorial Day was initially proclaimed on May fifth eighteen sixty-eight by General John Logos, National Commander of the Grand Army of the Republic, in his General Order Number Eleven. And whereas Memorial Day was first observed on May thirtieth eighteen sixty-eight when flowers were placed on the graves of Union and Confederate soldiers at Arlington Cemetery. And whereas our predecessors fought in wars so that our future generations would have freedom. And whereas they helped shape the society that we know today, including our political, economic, military, and social systems, advancements in science, technology, and cultural traditions that enrich our heritage. And whereas it is important that on Memorial Day to reflect on whole life memories of military personnel who have fought and died for our country, to preserve the rights guaranteed under the U.S. Constitution, and to keep our nation going strong. Whereas Memorial Day gives us the opportunity to renew our patriotism and to articulate our common desire to live in freedom and seek peace, so that our nation's veterans will not have died in vain. Now therefore, I Bill Lambert, Mayor of the City of Moscow, Idaho, do hereby recognize May thirtieth twenty sixteen as Memorial Day in the city, and I urge all citizens to honor those who have died in their service to our country. With that, I will move on to the consent agenda.
I would move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second? Okay, I've got a motion by Art, a second by Jim, to approve the consent agenda as is. We'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay. With that, we'll move on to item number two, which is mayor's appointments, and I'm going to turn this over to Council President Art.
Yes. These are not exactly mayoral appointments, so it falls to more of a city council housekeeping operation to assure city council representation on some of our commissions and other boards. And so I am proposing that we appoint Jim Boland to the Smart Transit Board, and seeing that he would vacate the pathways commission slot that he currently occupies, we would move to put Catherine Bonzo into that position. So with that, we would need a motion second and a vote.
Dan?
I would make a motion to approve those appointments slash-
Rearrangements.
Rearrangements, however you want to couch it.
Okay.
I'll second.
Dan made a motion, John is seconding it, to rearrange those appointments as was just described by President Art. Becky, I'll start with you, John.
Aye.
Aye.
I guess I'll abstain, since I'm part of that.
You can say aye.
All right, I'll say aye, but uh-
Aye.
Aye.
And aye.
Okay. Now we'll move on to item number three, staff recognition report. Gary, do we have anything, sir?
Oh, we do have something, but I forgot the paperwork, Your Honor, so I will make the announcement at the next council.
Okay. We'll move on to item number four, public comment. Mayor's response period, we limit fifteen minutes each meeting for those in the public who would like to get up and speak to us about any concerns that they may or may not have, as long as it is not anything on tonight's agenda, or anything that's currently in front of planning and zoning, or the Board of Adjustments. We give people three minutes, please. If you'd like to talk, state your name and your address, and we will open the podium up for that.
Margaret Dibble, one one three one Jack Shaw Road. Now, as you know, this is Bike Month, and so I had to report on some, there's been a lot of bicycle activity going on. This bicycle tourism idea is quite intriguing. There was a very successful Fill the Racks event, resulting in a lot more kids riding bicycles, and making us very aware that there's not nearly enough bicycle parking. And I also want to remind everybody that this coming Friday, May twentieth, is Bike to Work Day, and we will once again be handing out coffee and treats on the corner of Sixth and Main, if you come by on your bicycle. We've had very generous support from One World Cafe, and from Panhandle Artists and Bakery to provide treats, so I would like to see you all there. And there's one other item. Last Bike Month, we had some discussion with the police department about licensing bicycles. And it costs seven dollars to license a bicycle. You're supposed to license your bicycle if you live in Moscow, and the question is, what good does it do you? I have had one bicycle returned that was stolen because it was licensed, but most people seem to feel, well, you just look at the, they look up the identification number and get it back that way, so the license is sort of irrelevant. And I don't know how many bicycles are actually licensed. I had another bicycle stolen, and the perpetrator very carefully scraped the license off, so that didn't do much good, but with help of observant friends and social media, I got the bike back. So I was wondering, if you're going to go down and have all these bicycles pay seven dollars for a license, it would be nice if that money went towards something bicycle related, as we understood it just goes into the general pot, and it doesn't help bicyclists or bicycles at all, so. I have no idea how much money that actually is, but it would be nice to see it put towards something bicycle related.
Margaret, what time is that event that you're going to have on Friday?
Oh, sorry, yeah, thanks, thanks, Billy. We'll be set up about seven o'clock, maybe a little before, so probably seven to nine, until the food runs out, or the people stop coming, or- anyway, yeah, do come.
That's kind of interesting, Margaret, about the seven dollar license fee. Maybe we could, that's something we could research, Gary, and report on.
Certainly will, thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
Others who would like to come up and speak? Okay, seeing none, I will move on to item number five, presentation of Tree City USA and Growth Award. David Shaw, you have the podium, sir.
Good evening. Mayor Lambert, council members, and citizens of Moscow. I am proud to report that the city of Moscow was awarded the annual Tree City USA Award again this year, the twenty-third consecutive year for Tree City USA for the city of Moscow. Along with that, we were also awarded the Growth Award, Tree City USA Growth Award. This is sixteen years that the city of Moscow has gotten the Growth Award, so this is quite an feat. So on behalf of the Moscow Tree Commission, the Parks and Recreation Department, we would like to present to you the Tree City USA flag, Tree City USA Award, and Growth Award. The flag will be on display at the Paul Mann Building, and the awards for Tree City USA and the Growth Award will both be on display downstairs, outside the mayor's conference room. So with that, I would like to present these awards.
Who do you want to present them to, David?
Mayor Lambert, I think you're on the hook.
I've always wanted to do that, David.
Let's get it on the new guy.
Let's get it on, let's get it on in front, David.
Do you do that in front of the council?
Oh.
Let's not try to cover councilors up.
You're going to have to come this way.
We all have skills.
We're okay there.
Get everybody?
I'm not sure it's going to turn out. I think it's steady ones. You might have to give me three.
You're going to look like that.
Let's do one more. Perfect.
Very nice, it is twenty-three years in a row.
Twenty-three years.
And this will be the one that'll be downstairs with this.
Both of them, okay, nice, on the wall, or?
On the wall, yep. Thank you for the report, David, and the awards and stuff, so very nice for us. Okay, we will move on. Item number seven, public hearing, annexation and comp plan designation, rezoning land east of Mountain View Park. Michael Ray, you have the floor to start, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. Before you tonight, we have a request of Logos School for a comprehensive plan, land use designation, and zoning designation for property that's proposed to be annexed within the city of Moscow. It's located directly east of Mountain View Park. And really, we've got three components before the council tonight. We've got the annexation request for the thirty acres, and we also have really the adoption of the current comp plan, land use designation for the property, which is auto-urban residential. Property is currently designated that, it's just within the area city impact currently. We'll need to adopt that upon annexation. And then lastly, would be the rezoning of the property from the current Ag Forest designation to the R-two zone, which is our moderate-density, single-family residential zoning district. So just to familiarize yourself with the subject property, thirty acres in size, directly east of Mountain View Park, you'll see it in the center of your screen there. We've got Mountain View Road to the northwest of the property, making a ninety-degree to the north there. Also have Paradise Creek, transacts the northwest corner, loops around, and then borders the southwest corner as well, surrounded primarily by agricultural land to the north, east, and south, within the city limits boundary, which is the orange line that you see on your screen. Currently have predominantly single-family residential development in Good Samaritan to the southwest of your screen. This is a topography map, so those lines that you see represent two-foot contours, so property is relatively flat in elevation, sloping to the southeast of the property. You also have the Hundred Year Flood Plain, which is the blue shaded line. Looking at the current comp plan designation, currently designated as auto-urban residential, as well as the properties within the area city impact to the northeast and the south. Directly to the west, you have Mountain View Park, which is currently designated as parks and open space. The current subdivisions within the city limits boundary that are already developed are currently designated as neighborhood conservation. So what that auto-urban residential designation means within the comp plan, it's typically developed at low to moderate density residential uses. We generally see about three to seven units per acre with that designation, and the appropriate zoning districts are R-one, R-two, and R-three. R-one's low-density residential, then you have moderate-density residential, and medium-density residential with the R-three zone. Looking at the current zoning district and surrounding area, subject properties Ag Forest to the northeast and south are also Ag Forest. Mountain View Park is designated as farm ranch, and then you also have some R-two, moderate-density residential for the existing single-family neighborhood, Ford and Concord, Truman Streets. You see that R-four multifamily zone, which encompasses Good Sam to the southwest. This would be the proposal before the council tonight, is to rezone to that R-two designation. And what the zoning code says about the R-two zone, it's usually appropriate in a few different circumstances. One, when it's almost entirely surrounded by single-family dwellings, you don't really have harsh terrain, and you can accommodate smaller lot sizes. Then you also have utilities and other public services that are adequate for the densities allowed. I just wanted to highlight the utility system. We currently have existing water and sanitary sewer mains that extend to the east, the city limits boundary, on F Street, as well as, F Street, as well as D Street there, also loop to the neighborhoods, and we have a water line that extends to the restroom at Mountain View Park. This would be our thoroughfare plan that shows future roadway alignments, and you see the current designation of some of these roadways. F Street, the green line represents a collector, the blue line represents a minor arterial. So you'll see Mountain View Road's also a minor arterial, and then you have the blue dash line, which represents a future kind of general alignment of where the roadway network needs to extend through this property. Just a review of the utilities in the area, taking a look at our water system, we have existing mains in D and F Streets. We've taken a look at the two thousand twelve comprehensive water system plan, and done some modeling. It does describe the existing system as having adequate potable and fire flows to that area of the city. Looking at the sanitary sewer system, once again, we have those mains in D and F, and we have a two thousand eleven comprehensive sewer system plan, and that has also determined that within that area, there's, the existing system's adequate to serve the additional flow that could be generated from potential uses that are allowed within the R-two zone. Storm sewer system, as always, is conveyed through Paradise Creek throughout the city, so we utilize that for any future development that occurs on the property. With that, staff's recommendation is that the council conduct a public hearing upon the annexation, land use, and zoning designation, and upon consideration of any testimony presented, number one, approve the annexation ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary. And if the annexation ordinance is approved, approve the proposed comprehensive plan, land use designation resolution, and adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission's reasoned statement of relevant criteria. And then if the annexation ordinance is approved, as well as the comp plan, land use designation resolution, approve the proposed zoning ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that they be read by title and published by summary, and also adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission's reasoned statement of relevant criteria. All of those documents are attached to your packet tonight. And with that, I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you, that might have about this.
Well, just to reiterate, Mike, we will have one public hearing and three actions. For just clarification, one, two, and three, just as Mike had said. So questions for Mike? Art?
I have one. In the packet, the indication seems to be that the applicant would have to eventually get some easement right-of-ways to connect in with the water and sewer, and it says in the packet, D Street, but here you have the option for D or F?
They do have the option. It's likely that in order to get gravity for sanitary, they'll end up going all the way down to D, but it's my understanding, and Les could certainly talk a little bit more about this, it's likely that they may need to run both D and F, and complete the loop system for water.
Last, did you ever?
I can maybe clarify that a little bit, that the water system would need to tie into F Street, and likely include a loop from that stub that goes up to serve the restroom there at Mountain View Park, to make a loop around, essentially around the park, that would reach the site to provide adequate fire flow. As Mike mentioned, the sanitary sewer most likely would be a gravity flow system down to D Street. You know, they could run water down to D as well, but that's really up to them at that point.
Okay. Walter?
Last, if I may follow up on that. The line up to the restroom at Mountain View Park is that large? It's not just a one-inch or something feeding the restroom? It's large enough that it could be looped?
That is a six-inch main that goes up there. And depending on what the fire flow needs are of the building design when they finally get there, that may be adequate. It could be that if the fire flow needs are high enough, it might need to be upsized. But yeah, that's what's there today, is a six-inch.
If I may follow up?
Continue.
And where is the largest city water main in Mountain View?
Well, the main in Mountain View really ends back at Slonaker Drive, at the Blackwood Estates. The line in F Street would be our nearest large main, that's a ten-inch diameter in F, to its terminus there at the city limit.
Okay. And if I may ask a question for Mike. Mike, it's proposed to rezone from Ag Forestry to R-two, single-family residential. My belief is, or understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that schools can go in any zone.
Yeah, they're generally listed as conditionally used permits within any zoning district.
So why rezone to R-two?
To make it consistent with the comprehensive plan. So you have the auto-urban residential land use designation, which the property is currently designated as within the comp plan, and the zones that that designation points to are the R-one, R-two, and R-three zones. And we have a feeling that the R-two is more appropriate in this circumstance, and that's why they had gone with the R-two designation.
Thank you. Other questions for Mike before I open up the public hearing? Okay, thank you, Mike. I will open up the public hearing, and I would like to hear from the applicant, please.
I'm Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, four oh five South Washington. Just like to say thank you to Mike and the staff for the job they did helping us to get this together. Really, there's, you know, Mike answered all the questions, but I would certainly be glad to answer any other ones if you had any questions for, for me, or the school.
I think we're good right now, Scott, well.
Yep. All right, thank you very much.
We may very well ask you back up here, so go down, sit down, and enjoy yourself, and I will ask for testimony of those that are in favor. Seeing nobody rush to the podium, I will ask for any general comments, any type of input that anybody would like to make. Please come forward. State your name, sir, your address, and we will give you three minutes.
I'm Ken Grubbs. I live at twelve oh eight North Mountain View Road, which is on the way to this property, and spent a lot of time in the East Park. Thank you very much for approving the dog access. That was a wonderful thing. My dog Rocky appreciates that, and I was there this evening. I was concerned, I don't know what the purpose of this is, I'll say that I'm, I would generally support anything that Logos wants to do, so that's my orientation here, so to put context on my remarks. The beauty of East Park is you can go out there, see rainbows, see beautiful land at the park, and I don't know what the plans are for this property, whether it's going to be a school building, you know, that'll be several stories high, or if it's going to be a bunch of residential, more dense than the properties that are there currently. The properties that are to the south and east are really nice properties that are nice to look at with significant acreage. Designating this as R-two leaves me concerned that it's going to change the flavor of that part of town. I'm currently zoned in the county, so I'm also very glad that I don't have to have a bicycle permit. I ride the bike to work every day, and I really don't understand why we have to register everything in our lives that we do, including bicycles, because I have a half a dozen of them, and so that ups my cost, but I would just like to say that the beauty of the land, I'm concerned about the impact for that, and then I'm also concerned that I have no interest in being annexed currently. I have my own well, and the benefits of being in the county, and if in any way this proposal motivates the council to use it as leverage to annex North Mountain View Road, which is from Slonaker to where the East Park is, I would be vehemently opposed to that. So, thank you.
Come on up, please.
Hi, thank you. I'm Jerry Hudak, and I live at eight thirty Ford Street. And I too am a little concerned about the changing to the R-two zoning. I know that, that Logos School is going to need to raise a lot of money to build the school and the church on that property, and I'm just concerned that if that's annexed and changed to R-two, and then they are not able to raise that money, you know, what would become of that now annexed zoning R-two property? Because I feel better about having a school there than a lot of houses, another subdivision, because it is a beautiful area, that area of the park, and it's, there's not very many open spaces like that around anymore. And so I too am concerned about losing that open space and beauty out there at Mountain View Park. I'm also a little concerned about the shape and safety of Mountain View Road. So there's going to be a lot more traffic on that road, and a lot of kids going to school. There's no sidewalks, there's no curbs, there's that, you know, that big ninety-degree curve that doesn't even have a guardrail or anything there. And so that's going to need improvement to make the school safe, I would think. I know there was just an article in the paper about trying to get some grant money for that, but also the, you know, property owners will be paying for that road, and I believe that the school and the church would not have to pay property taxes, so they wouldn't be helping to fund the improvements to get safely to their school. So these are my concerns. Thank you.
My name's Barbara Helyer. I'm, I live at eight forty Ford Street. I have concerns similar to Jerry with the increased traffic on Mountain View Road. There are a lot of people who ride their bike and walk their dogs along that road, so I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the proposal that we were presented for the Logos Plan, is to have a bridge across the creek at the south end of the property, and that potentially would be a drop-off place for kids, so that they could go, not actually enter the school, and drop their kids off, but they could go to the end of F Street and then drop their kids off there. And F Street, I don't know if anybody has recently driven on F Street, but it's got a lot of seams, and it's not very level, so the condition of that road isn't, isn't really very good. So I'm concerned about the potential increase of traffic on the end of F Street, along with the increased traffic on Mountain View, so.
Anybody else would like to testify before I bring, okay, come on up, sir?
Dwayne Benson, I live on Mountain View Road, excuse me, Moscow Mountain Road, one eight three six Mountain View Road. My concerns are also about the traffic. Anything that's brought up at the last meeting was kind of whitewashed over, I thought, they just said, oh, it'll be okay, it'll be all right, but nothing, no plan was ever set for how far the road needs to be widened, about sidewalks that were mentioned, about kids' bicycles going up the street. Also, nothing had been mentioned about farm equipment going up and down that road. That is a farm-to-market road, lots and lots of heavy equipment up and down that road, and I just see real issues with the traffic pattern in there, and as of yet, I've seen no plan to address that, other than a turnabout has been suggested, but there's been lots of, in talking with people around the, around the city and county about turnabouts, they don't handle, they handle cars very well, they don't handle large equipment very well. So again, I would like to see a plan addressed to how this traffic would be handled, how the road's going to be widened, where the sidewalks are going to be, are these alternate roads that are being mentioned, are those actually going to be put in, or are those just mentioned? There's been other areas around Moscow, I understand, where this kind of thing was supposed to take in place, and it hasn't, and I'd hate to see that happen again here in this one. And I'd hate to see that happen again here in this one, so.
Thank you. I would invite the applicant to come back up and perhaps speak about some of the issues some of these folks have had.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington. I understand the concerns, and the reason that we didn't bring up, you know, show a plan for what's going out there right now is we're trying to get through the process the way it's set up with the city. So right now, we're looking at the rezone, annexation, and comp plan designation. Once we get through that, then we can present the plan itself. We just didn't want to derail the process by jumping ahead of ourselves. So once we get through this process, then we can go to the next step. And I believe all of these issues will be addressed in that plan, and I think everybody's going to be real happy about it. We are working to handle pedestrian, you know, increased pedestrian traffic and roundabout and a bridge and arterial through that site. So these are all, these are all items that will be paid for by the development and not by the city. So it's not a cost that's landing on the city's lap, it's actually landing on the development's lap. So anyway, if you have any other questions, I'd...
Could we put the schematic back up that shows the Mountain View Road as it comes down and turns to the north with the subject property on there, too?
There you go.
Okay, John, what's your question? Pardon me? You got a question on that?
Well, my question is, we've got, at this point, if I'm not mistaken, at what point does Mountain View leave the city and become part of a county road? Right there at the intersection or further back up? Right there at the intersection. Is that correct?
Is that where that yellow line is, Mike?
Yeah, the orange line represents city limits boundary.
It actually, here's one, Jim.
So the yellow line...
It's out of city limits here, John.
And then goes back in.
And then goes back out.
Okay.
So it's right at the very corner of the property then?
Is...
City.
Is the city limit land on the north side of Mountain View at that point?
Yes.
And so is it the responsibility of the developer to redo Mountain View to the west? Is that what we're talking about here? What's that?
That's how you get to CP.
Mike, you want to address that?
Well, right now, we're currently just looking at the annexation, comp plan, and rezoning of the property. It all depends on what the future use is. There's speculation about a school going there, but it could be, you know, very different if there may be a residential subdivision that goes in on the property. So, you know, it'll be at that stage of the conditional use permit, if they do apply for a school for the property, when that'll be assessed by staff. We had some preliminary discussions, and, you know, there probably would be some improvements to Mountain View. There was talk of expanding the roadway on one side of the street and then a sidewalk on one side of the street, but that'll all have to be assessed when we see an application for the conditional use permit.
And we have not, or you have not received that application, and when you do, Hodgins Associates and the city staff will get together and work out what needs to be done, as Scott just said.
Correct.
John, what we're doing here is we have to approve the annexation ordinance first before anything happens, so there cannot be a plan before these three steps happen.
Other question, Walter?
Well, just a comment, and I think I appreciate the timing quandary that people are finding themselves in, but the application for the zoning amendment to the city of Moscow states the reason for it is for proposed school, signed by the applicant. So I don't think it's out of the realm of belief that we're talking, kind of talking about a school there.
Question for Catherine. Catherine, you were liaison to P&amp;Z when this came in front of them. Would you like to speak?
I think Mike said everything that it just had to do, actually, a lot of the same comments came forward, the same people spoke, and it was good they had to say, but it was the same thing, that we can't go forward until we get the rezone done. So we have to decide if we're going to rezone or not rezone. That's kind of what we're being asked to do.
Okay.
Mayor Gary, I think Mike, have something?
Gary, a point before I close...
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate the point that you made, Your Honor. The request tonight is for annexation and rezone, or making the comp plan designation and then a zone to R2. Anything could go out there. If the application for a school comes through, as Mike indicated, it requires a conditional use permit, so any conditions that are necessary to make that particular use compatible can be put on the property at that time and on the development. And of course, any development of the property will have to comply with the development standards and street standards that have been passed by the city council. So all of those issues will be taken up at that time.
Mike, in all the, all the housing in this area, is that all R2 as well?
Correct.
So it would be the adjoining, if for some reason this became in the, was annexed into the city at R2, then, in other words, that couldn't be, there'd have to be a zoning change if somebody wanted to build a bunch of apartments there or something, it would have to be, it could only be the same kind of housing that's adjacent.
Correct. Yeah, generally, you know, all the newer subdivisions, you see zoned R2 being annexed into the city. Correct.
Okay, more questions for Mike before I close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed, and we will deliberate amongst the council. Dan?
Yeah, I think we kind of talked about it a little bit up here during the public hearing part, but, you know, really, the plan for the property doesn't play into the decision tonight. You know, it's, this is just based on the merits of the rezone and the comp plan designation, and whether it's worth annexing into the city. Because as stated, when the, when the plan does come in, we normally require the developer to make those improvements to the infrastructure to make what they're going to do to the property work. And I, you know, I can remember, was it 2003, or two, when, was it five? When the Moscow School District was, you know, making the attempt out there as well to, through a failed bond, so, you know, I think with that, I would make a motion to approve the annexation ordinance under suspension of the rules, requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it'll be read by title and published by summary.
A second.
Further discussion before I take a roll? Walter?
Just a general comment, and it's personal. We're getting a fair number of this type of thing come through, not, not schools and not, but it's rezones or different changes in zoning or whatever. And I would be a lot happier if the applicant themselves appeared at these. I can appreciate Scott being their representative, I appreciate him being on the payroll, I can appreciate the good job he does for his clients. And they are not required to be here, but I would just feel better if the applicant showed up as if they wanted. Just a personal comment.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to make note that in our packet on page 108 and 109, there's five reasons given for the relevant criterion standards, comprehensive plan amendment that you can read, and then there's stuff, five also reasons for the rezone, and everything's in compliance.
Thank you, Catherine. With that, Walter, I'll start to roll with you.
Aye.
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 Okay. We have approval of the annexation. We've got an ordinance 2016 dash...
Six.
Six? You said six, Laurie. Okay, an ordinance to the city of Moscow, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing that the land described in section one of this ordinance and generally shown on exhibit A attached hereto, and incorporated by the reference be annexed to the city of Moscow, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the, from and after passage, approval, and publication according to law. Okay, that's number one. Now we've got to talk about number two, which is a comprehensive plan, land use designation, resolution, and adoption of the planning and zoning commission reasoned statement of relevant criteria.
I think this follows right along with the annexation. Once you annex, you have to decide where that piece of land fits within the comprehensive plan, and I think the proposed designation fits with the intent of the comprehensive plan. Auto-urban residential. Hearing no others, I would make a motion to approve the proposed comprehensive plan, land use designation resolution, and to adopt the planning and zoning commission's reasoned statement of relevant criteria.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Art and a second by Jim to approve, to approve the proposed comprehensive plan, use designation, resolution, and adapt the planning and zoning commission reasoned statement of relevant criteria. We're all clear on that? John, I'll start to roll with you.
Aye.
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 Okay. Now we'll move on to item number three, which is approval of the zoning ordinance under this, well, I'll let you, zoning ordinance, I'll leave it at that. John?
Yeah, I would move that since the annexation ordinance was approved and the land use designation is approved, that we approve the proposed zoning ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary, and adopt the planning and zoning commission reasoned statements of relevant criteria.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion by John, a second by Dan, to approve the proposed zoning ordinance under the suspension of three rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and to be read and titled and published by summary, and adopt the planning and zoning commission reasoned statement of relevant criteria.
And I would say that many of the concerns expressed tonight during the comment period from the public are perhaps a little premature for the actions proposed here tonight, and will certainly come up again as development proceeds, and conditional use permits are required for the ostensibly proposed development that will occur on the site. So you get another chance to sink your teeth into what seems to be more the concerns of the neighbors and the citizens of town.
Okay, with that, I'll start to roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay. So now we have ordinance number 2016 dash seven. An ordinance to the city of Moscow, Idaho, municipal corporation of Idaho, providing for the zoning of a 30-acre parcel of property described in section one of this ordinance as moderate-density, single-family residential R2, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage, applicable and publication according to law. Thank you, everyone, very much. Walter?
If I may, a comment?
Sure.
Dan said this, I think, a moment ago, and I just wanted to reiterate it for the purposes of the people that do have concerns, as Art just pointed out, and I'll let Les look straight at me and correct me if I misstate it. But cities do not extend water, sewer, and streets as a rule. It's very seldom that cities do that. Developers of property extend and bring to themselves either new water, sewer, and streets, or enlargement of water, sewer, and streets. So as has been indicated a couple of times around the periphery of the questions, that's what the city will be looking to the developer to do on this. And again, as Art was inferring, would invite each and every one of you to come back when that comes before us, and, you know, see what's being proposed, and express any concerns you may have at that time. We're not, we're not ignoring you, that's just not the issue before us tonight.
Well, and the thing, in addition to Walter's point, there'll be two times you'll have a public planning and zoning as well as this body up here, so it'll be several different times. That, Mike, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number eight, USDA farmer's market grant. Elise Anderson, Elise?
How are you this evening? I'm very good. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item tonight was originally presented to administrative committee last Monday. However, we needed to make some changes in the application before it was submitted. And so I just wanted to go back over with you what we actually submitted and have you ratify that application. So originally, we had spoken to you in submitting an application that included internet services and also funding for a farmer's market manager. And as we worked through the process with our information systems department and looked at the guidelines within that application, there were some criteria that would prevent us to be able to submit the request for the internet services. However, the funding for the farmer's market salary was still eligible, and so we moved forward with that application. And previously, I also had not asked to use matching funds, because they are not required. However, as I worked through the application and went back and reviewed some other submittals, I felt that in order for us to be competitive in the program with what we were submitting, that we needed to contribute at least 20%, which is really already, if we are to be awarded, it would start October 1st, and that amount is already within the current budget. The council could then, if we were awarded, decide how they would want to move forward with any future allocations for that. So basically, what we did do is submit a grant application for $117,532 with matching funds of $29,383 for a total project cost of $146,915. And as I said, the application was submitted last Thursday. However, if the council would choose not to move forward with that, I could have it removed from the program. So tonight, I'm bringing forth to you a request to ratify the application that was submitted.
So the $29,000 is spread out over the three years of the, of the grant?
Yes.
And I, I think I understood that the whole internet idea we had just wasn't going to happen.
It wasn't an option to include any construction work, and we could contract out most anything that was part of it. However, the steps in the process, it just, we weren't ready. We just really weren't ready, and we didn't have the adequate power downtown to get it. And the cost to be able to do that was not something we could determine in the timeframe we had available for the submittal.
Thank you. John?
And it would be possible, then, to take the money that we are paying for a market manager now and just transfer that over?
Yes, that would...
To cover our...
The match funds.
Yeah, if that was, you know...
Or matching amount.
Yeah, there won't, I mean, other than what I've requested to be allocated in a match, whatever is remaining in the budget would be up to the council to choose to do what they want to.
Gary?
That was the idea with the additional match when it came up, and it made us more competitive, that it would, we're already paying for a part-time market manager anyway, so it won't exceed that amount over those three years.
Other questions for Elise?
So if I may...
Walter?
So we're talking with benefits around 50 grand a year for a market manager?
It's, I believe, was $146,000 was the total amount.
$146,915.
Yeah, so just shy of that. That includes benefits?
Yes.
Under our current, under our current pay scale, that would be a, I think it's a pay band six, so that's the appropriate. We've studied that, and that's where it should be in the, in the pay scale.
Okay. And another question, please?
Okay, go ahead, Walter.
Any, any thinking about how to get internet for the, for the vendors down there outside of this?
Yeah, it's been widely discussed. I'd probably defer that question to Jesse, but there, our infrastructure just isn't really in place yet for that, but there are options... really in place yet for that, but there are options of either doing wireless hotspots or extending the fiber system that we currently have. It's just, it just was too much to propose at this time.
I understand it won't fit this, but I was just curious about how might we some, do we have a vision for how to someday get Internet available to the vendors?
Yes, and I, and I think, you know, we have a couple of options coming up in the future. As you know, we're eligible for some community development block funds, too, and looking at redoing some of the sidewalks in downtown areas. There are just some things that we're just, we're not there yet. And so there are options, but it would be really nice to be able to do that project as a whole. And, you know, we'll certainly be looking at for next year possibly another application under this program, you know, what we can do. We'll be planning over the next year and seeing, you know, what we can do.
Catherine?
I was just going to go ahead and?
Good.
I move to ratify approval of the USDA Farmer's Market Promotion Program grant request of $117,532 to assist, to assist in funding a full-time farmer's market manager for three years.
Aye, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Catherine and a second by Art to ratify the approval of USDA Farmer's Market Promotion Program grant request of $117,532 to assist in funding a full-time farmer's market manager for three years. John, I'll start the roll with you.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Elisa.
Thank you.
Good to go.
Mattel Brook, congratulations.
Item number nine, Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP grant, Steiner-White Highway Eight underpass. Jen Pifter will be presenting. Jen, welcome this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item was also discussed at the administrative committee last week, and some details have changed along the way, so we brought it forward this evening to mention those and to talk about the Steiner-White Avenue Highway Eight underpass opportunity for grant funding. This project was originally presented back in 2011 with a student group from the University of Idaho, an engineering class, was presented in several phases. The most recent discussion happened in February of 2015, where that, at that meeting, at that council meeting, council directed staff to look for potential grant opportunities to fund this project. The idea is that the Paradise Creek Bridge structure would include a pedestrian and bicycle underpass linking that area to Paradise Path, LeTah Trail, and other bicycle networks in the community. The grant opportunity that's been identified is the Transportation Alternatives Program. It's formerly known as Community Choices. When we first discussed this project last week, we were looking at costs and had estimated that they would run $425,000 with a potential match of $31,000, give or take. And then as we've researched the project further and looked at the program itself and the structure, costs have changed a little bit there. The revised total project cost estimate would now be $539,380, would result in TAP funding of $499,790, with matching funds at 7.34%, which would be $39,500. Some of the costs take into account, excuse me, additional hydrological and geotechnical work, structural work primarily under the bridge, and safety needs to be addressed from the bridge at Blaine Street to the entrance of the county fairgrounds in that area. We also were able to meet with ITD's District Two representatives, which is part of the application process, and we did a site visit and spent some time with them last Wednesday in discussing the potential for scheduling with them. It looks like design could happen in FY '17 with construction in FY '18. There is an option, too, depending on the program, that it would be '18 and '19, but they said '17 and '18 looked likely for us. With the design phase match requirement in that fiscal year, it would be $5,315 in FY '17. And then for the construction phase in FY '18, our match requirement would be $34,275. In the current fiscal year, the budget, there are $10,000 allocated for Paradise Path improvements. There have been no projects identified for that funding at this point, and hasn't been expended. The thought was perhaps to roll that over into the next budget year, include that as our match for the project, kicking it off with $10,000, leaving only the $29,000 and change remaining for FY '18. That said, our application is due June 1st. Those are the, it's basically funding levels that we would have to change. The project itself has not changed to date, and we're looking for approval to move forward with that, if you'd like us to.
Questions for Jen? Dan?
You know, not a question, I just wanted to comment that this is, like we said, this first come up in 2011. I think at that time, I was on the liaison to the Paradise Path Task Force, and, you know, it was one of those things that just was found, and these students brought it forward, and, you know, brought this neat plan up for it, and I know Jim figures we can go out there with a couple of number twos and get it done in a weekend, but, you know, this, we talked about how, as if grant funding came available, we would pursue it, and it looks like our opportunity's here, so, you know, I'd look forward to seeing it happen.
Yeah, I'd add to that, that when I was on the Pathways Commission Paradise Path Task Force, this was one of the number-one items that they wanted to see done, just to enhance the connectivity of the pathways in and around Moscow, so that people don't have to dodge the traffic on Highway Eight to get from the body of town across to the Paradise Path. And I think it's a really good thing to see that funding, grant funding, has been located, and we're applying for it, I hope, in the next few minutes, because I think it really suits the goals of the citizens of town very much.
Walter?
Jen, can you elaborate upon the last comment in the packet about collaboration with the Urban Renewal Agency and the North LeTah County Highway District?
Yes, I'd be happy to. A portion of the project, specifically the bridge piece, lies within the legacy crossing Urban Renewal District. And so talking with the URA and asking if they'd be interested in partnering on that and assisting with the match funds, that discussion started, and they're meeting next week, and we'll perhaps discuss that at that time. I believe it's on the agenda, so. And then with the White Avenue section, there's some sidewalk section there that borders the county fairgrounds and the North LeTah Highway District, to see if there's an opportunity to work on some of the sidewalk pathway section within there to complete it, and discussing that.
So that would be work above and beyond the underpass part?
There is a small portion of sidewalk that's not included in the pathway, and the, the project itself includes quite a bit of pathway in the underpass, but there's a small section of sidewalk there that we've looked at, making that final connection through to connect both sections.
Okay, and if I may, one final comment. I noticed the funding is up to $500,000, yet we're only asking for $499,790. I'm not sure why we want to leave $210 on the table, especially if ITD has indicated that.
Somebody might need it. Somebody might have a little project, Walter. Give them a chance.
These things always run over, Walter.
What you get, if you got it, you got to come up with a difference. That's all I've got, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Walter. Dan?
I would recommend, let's see, make a motion to recommend approval to submit this application to the Idaho Transportation Department's Transportation Alternatives Program for the Steiner-White Avenue Highway Underpass Project, not to exceed $500,000.
I'll second. Okay, Dan made a motion and approved by, seconded by John, to submit the application to Idaho Transportation Department for the Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, or Steiner-White Highway Eight Underpass Project, in an amount not to exceed $500,000. That'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, we're good to?
If I may just one thing, this is a project that I don't typically work on, or I've been happy to assist other people, but being able to work with Elisa and Bill, Scott Bontrager, Kyle Steele, Kevin Lilly, there's, we've got some pretty amazing and talented people. It's been really fun to be able to work with them, and I'm learning a lot, and I really appreciate their time and, and working through this with me, so, thank you.
It's always good to surround yourself with those that are really good at what they do, Jen. You're welcome, thank you for the presentation. Okay, item number 10, Sojourners Alliance Funding Report, Gary Reidner. Gary, you have the podium, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you may have read in the paper last weekend, weekend before last, excuse me, Sojourners Alliance has, our local homeless shelter, has run into some financial difficulties with the federal allotment of funds. Steve Bonner, the executive director of Sojourners, is here to address the council. He's been busy running around trying to raise funding in what appears to be a crisis situation that federal funding was going to be cut off, and I'll let Steve tell his story fairly quickly. So he's visited LeTah County, has contacted several additional funding entities, and this was presented, at least in concept, as a general discussion item at administrative committee last week, and fortunately, Steve was at that time up talking to the county commissioners, who wasn't able to be here. But at your request, Your Honor, he's here, ready to address the council.
Come on up, Steve.
Mayor Lambert, city council members, thank you for having me. Steve Bonner, Sojourners Alliance Executive Director, 627 North Van Buren. Just a little bit of background to this, I'm a regional representative for the Housing Coalition, which means I'm a voting board member for the state. At our state meeting in October, an undersecretary of HUD was there, presented to us that as housing went with HUD, that transitional housing would be going by the wayside over time. No indication was given to us that it was going to happen as quickly as it did. At our state meeting just a few weeks ago, nothing was mentioned. IHFA, Idaho Housing Finance Association, was not aware that our funding was in imminent danger. When we were notified two weeks ago today, it gave us 20 working days in which to adjust our budget, which our grant cycle would have begun June 1st. So with 20 days remaining in the month, trying to find initial finances to keep the place open long enough for the participants I have living there to transition out, hopefully, into their own housing. I've been able to raise enough money in the last two weeks, approximately $37,000. But at that point, the end of August, unless something changes, we will be closed. We're now looking at long-term. I met with county commissioners from the whole region last week, again, talked to our county commissioners. This is really a regional problem if we close down. Currently, in the calendar year of 2015, we helped 114 people come through our program. Typically, my onsite program, we can house up to 23 individuals, and most times we're full. Just in the last two weeks, I've turned away over 20 households in just the last two weeks. So the void, if our services are gone, are not only going to impact the city of Moscow, but LeTah County and the region. I've been asked about where people come from. About 25% of the population we serve comes from Lewiston-Clarkston Valley, about 10% comes from the other outlined areas, but then the rest come from Moscow. And that's basically what I know as of right now. Idaho Housing, they have a foundation, they are going to provide a moving stipend for each of our participants, which I have 16 onsite right now, $350, and will pay for a deposit. My problem with that is currently I have eight people that have filed for social security disability. They are not able to work, they have no income, so they can get a Section 8 voucher. HUD is giving a waiver, so all my participants can go at the top of the list and get a Section 8 voucher. Without any income, they would not be able to afford the rents, even if provided that voucher. So it's kind of a catch-22. And then we have these households that will move out prematurely, and where's the furnishing that's going to help them, the house beds, dressers, et cetera? So it's kind of daunting in that aspect for my participants. As far as my organization goes, we'll either come out of this stronger, or we will be closed. There's not going to be any halfway in between. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Questions?
Steve, this was federal funding?
Correct, yeah. It was a HUD grant of $77,000, then Idaho Housing did a match with us that brought it up to about $100,000. So that's off the table.
Okay. Jim?
Steve, when you said that you had to turn away 20 people that needed housing?
20 households. Two of them were families living in cars. I can go on and on. So the actual number is more than 20, but we considered a household, whether it's one person or five people.
So when you, when you have to turn these people away, they just go live in their car, then?
Correct.
You have no, there's no alternative, no other place you can send them, where they can get something transitional until they can get into the new program?
Closest is Coeur d'Alene or Spokane, as far as housing goes. We can refer them to St. Vincent's for maybe one or two nights, there's a voucher in a motel. Real Life Ministries as well might put them up in a motel for one or two nights, but that's the extent of any kind of help that's available to them.
Walter?
Hi, Steve.
Hi, Walter.
It's been a long time since we fixed a bathroom with you, but we got that done.
Yes, we did.
What? Are you here asking for something? And if so, what is it?
Well, actually, no, not at this point. It's informational. My hope is, and I appreciate the question, I've been contacted by Senator Schmidt, Representative Troy, a number of other folks within the community. What I intend on doing is bringing a meeting together of these minds in a couple of weeks, and just brainstorm, you know, what are solutions out there? Does the community want a homeless shelter? What are the needs? So that I'm not driving it, but it's a community-based decision of what we do. And that's my intention of taking this forward, is I'm not here asking for money right now, I'm just here to impart the information, knowledge that I have as of right now.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah, you said you got some, what amounts to bridge funding to take you about through August. After we get to August, I assume you'll be looking for other potential longer-term sources of funding. Are there any out there, and what are the chances?
Yes, there is one that popped up real quick, within three days. Department of Corrections contacted me and asked me if we were interested in housing felons coming directly out of prison. The rate of pay is pretty decent, but that's an issue that we provide housing for the homeless. That's a whole nother population that at this point I'm not really interested in. My board would have to make the decision, but I can tell you, we've already discussed it, and I don't think they're real open to that. That would be a bailout, because we've struggled. I mean, I've been in my position almost 10 years now, and over the last 10 years, I've had to absorb positions to maintain us to the tune of $60,000 in layoffs while I do double duty. Between my office manager and myself, we've given up over $30,000 over our own pockets to keep the place going. So in a way, this is whatever God is, this is God's sin. Either we get out of this rut and the spiral we've been in, we're stronger, better for it, or we're closed. I believe in what our mission is and the services that we provide, but again, this is not just a Moscow, LeTah County, this is a regional issue, and that's where I'm hoping, if it's important enough, people within our region will step up and have solutions or answers that, how we might fit the future.
Catherine?
So you've said you've already met with some of the commissioners around, and so what are you hearing?
Well, they, the Behavioral Health Board is where all the county commissioners get together, deal with mental health issues and substance abuse. And they have a housing committee, and so Scott Douglas, who is the chair of that meeting, he and I are arranging a meeting to get together to discuss how we might create some partnerships outside of DOC as well, so. So at least all five counties in our region are aware of what's going on, other than what's in the paper.
Well, you know, Stephen, I'm glad you got a chance to come up here and tell us really what was going on, you know, besides what we've heard through other folks and reading in the paper and stuff, so we know exactly. And it's good for the community to get a chance to see this as well.
The amount, if I may, just one more thing, the amount that I put out there, what we needed to keep our doors open to, through August, is bare bones. I'm actually, in a staffing pattern, I would have a full-time case manager and a part-time case manager. Those are vacant right now, because I was actually going to do some hiring last week, but because of this, I had holdoff, so I'm absorbing both positions, which are a total of 64 hours a week, on top of my duties as executive director, to see this ship through. And we're hopeful, Mayor Lambert, now that I've got the immediate crisis done, now we can focus on what our future could look like, and what our community wants of us. I believe we are a part of the solution. Of course, when I first started there, we were part of the problem.
One more thing, my impression of the federal take on this is that they're, they're taking this funding away, and they're trying to get people into more permanent housing immediately, instead of the transitional, instead of funding the transitional thing?
Yes.
And will that, do you see that to be in place by August?
Oh, I'll have $27,000 available come October 1st, but I could spend that in two months. I mean, I've had those funds before. And I have issue, and appreciate the question, because this is kind of an educational opportunity as well. We had rapid rehousing funds back when we called Obama bucks, the federal stimulus money. And during that time, we helped 109 households in 15 months that were homeless, et cetera. What we saw was about 90% of that population were normal, working. What we saw was about 90% of that population were normal, working people who had cutbacks, medical issues, reduction of hours, et cetera. 10% were those that were system users and abusers, and that same 10% we have seen again. The data that's supporting shifting to rapid rehousing is based on that time through the Obama's economic stimulus funds. So I don't see it that way, because the individuals I have need more structure than that. I look at the folks I have currently right now, and maybe about three of the individuals would thrive on having a deposit and maybe three months' worth of rent and go on their merry way. The folks we have come in have massive barriers in their lives that have led them to coming to us. So to give them just, here's some housing, we'll give you a little support, and then you go on your way, that really caters more towards a normal, working individual that has stability in their life and just has hit hard times. That's just my own professional opinion, though.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Best wishes for you. Okay, with that, I will move on to reports. Art, I'll start with you.
Public Works and Finance met last week, and we covered the issues that came before us at that meeting, at tonight's meeting. Beyond that, last week, we had a meeting of the Fair and Affordable Housing Commission. Hi, Randy. chaired by Randy Boko back there, and had a discussion of affordable housing based on research from other municipalities in terms of how do other municipalities handle the issue of fair and especially affordable housing in their areas? What inducements, what carrots can we offer to developers to provide more affordable housing in town? So there was considerable discussion on that, and we'll be back at that, talking about it some more. The Fair and Affordable Housing Commission had a booth at Farmer's Market last Saturday, and both John Freeland and Randy Boko were there, discussing the issues with people, which is good. My other commission, the Sustainable Environment Commission, meets tomorrow night at 7:00. So if anybody's interested in that, please show up. URA meets Thursday, so we'll be discussing URA issues, they're associated with projects that go on with that. So I don't have any other reports, but I'm sure I will next time, because all the meetings happen after tonight.
Jane, Catherine?
Planning and zoning met on the 11th, and John Freeland, I think, finishes out the, completes the commission there for planning and zoning. There was a Transportation Commission report from Joel Hamilton, and he wants to remind everybody, they meet on Thursdays once a month, four to six, but there was a discussion on the complete streets policy, because the city doesn't have a complete one. And it said it could be useful for grants, and they talked about the possible ideas for the bicycle tourism campaign and intersection mobility standards. We went through all the stuff that Mike took us through, and then there was the off-street parking presentation, and the people in the commission had to go visit four different sites to look at parking lots. So they went to like Shireys and Applebee's and, I wrote all the, oh, and Fairview and Walmart, and to look at all the parking. And the main things is functionality and aesthetics and shading, and because all the research shows that retailers get more shoppers when there's more trees on their lots, and so that's kind of what this had to do with. And so spending a lot of time, trying to figure out about trees and stuff, so the head of the Tree Commission came and presented. So there was a long talk about trees and what to do and all that kind of stuff, so that's kind of in process. And then there's the interesting fact that I thought the average age of a downtown tree is only seven years old. So they gave all kinds of facts about like tree heights, and so that's trying to be figured out. And then, and the size of the, what's in the parking lot. We do three, and you see like eight feet around, but anyway. So what we need to be doing is a percent to parking lot spaces with soil. And then, then there was a large, oh, and there hasn't been an update on all our parking lot stuff since the 90s. So that's kind of where that's coming from. And then there was a discussion about the freestanding banner signs, the pros about what they are good for and their height, and how many should be there, and what kind of repair, and different zones and different times. And so it's a conversation that was just getting started, and the man that owns Jiffy Lube came, and, and he's the one that's, you know, kind of leading it, so they had a big discussion about that. So it's kind of still just in process.
Thank you, Catherine. Welcome back, Walter.
Thank you, Mayor. Been a little busy since I got back. The Volunteer Fire Department Board Meeting was on Monday night, the 9th. Items of note there, they added one new member to Company 7. They added three existing members into their rescue unit. They have met their fund drive for 2015, 2016, got, got that done. They're working on their 125th year celebration.
2017.
Which will be in 2017. Looking, they're starting to work toward putting that together, and they're working on updating their policies. They have come to the conclusion that they were written sometime before, five years ago, and they need to update it. So they're working on that. On the 11th, I attended the 2016 Campus Community Forum, which has been held annually for quite a while, and I've, I've never gone before. It was at the 1912 Building, and it is presented in partnership by the Washington State University Center for Civic Engagement and the University of Idaho Center for Voluntarism and Social Action. It was intended to discuss campus community partnerships and student civic engagement. When I was in college, which was a little while ago, we didn't even know there was a community attached to the, to the campus. I mean, we may have had to drive through it to get on campus, but that was about it. But apparently, there are a lot of opportunities and efforts on these campuses nowadays to get students to step out into the community, to work with various nonprofits and with the cities and whatever, to, to get engaged and, and to be good citizens. So this was a sold-out, even though it was free event. They had, they had a waitlist for people wanting to get in. Had a lady by the name of Dr. Christine Kress for the keynote speaker. She came from Portland State University over to talk about how they approached things over there. So it was a very eye-opening event. I was there, all three county commissioners were there, good representation from both WSU and U of I. On Wednesday, the 11th, the Farmer's Market Commission met. The great majority of that time was spent discussing their fee structure, whether or not they want to amend the, the way they charge vendors' fees, and then once they can get past that, talk about exactly what they wish to do, to see about some inequities and possibly some increases. They understand that the council has an interest in seeing the farmer's market becoming more self-sustaining, and they are cognizant of that. There was no real definitive position on what they might recommend for the fees that will be adopted for October the 1st, but that will be, I'm sure, forthcoming. They are looking at, at things in a larger sense at the, at this moment. On Thursday, the 12th, at the invitation to, to the city council members, I attended the New St. Andrews graduation at the Nazarene Church. It's always an inspiring event, some, some great young people that are being, that have come here from around the country, if not the world, and apply themselves in a, in a way that, that most of us haven't, that went to A&amp;M schools and to land-grant institutions in engineering and, and business and so forth. They're getting the classical education, and very, very good event. The singing by the non-choir members is awesome, and they have a real impact on the economy of this community, and New St. Andrews does. They bring people in here that, that open and run a lot of our businesses and perform a real economic impact on us, as well as the educational part. That's all I've got.
Okay, Jim?
Okay, Administrative Committee, last Monday, we pretty much covered everything on the regular agenda that went on there. Last Tuesday, I went to the Pathways Commission, and the crux of that was Dave Schott said that there's going to be striping on the Paradise Path, a fog line and a center line in the, in the curvy sections like through Berman Park, so to make that a safer thing for in the evening, in the twilight hours, and, and just for people cutting the corners. And if there's a center line, they might be less likely to cut over and head-on people on the corners.
Know who's on the wrong side.
Yeah, you'll know who's at fault, anyway. Also, there's going to be, there will be a, a ride through the pathway system again this summer at some time, and they're trying to establish a date on that based on when the signage gets up, the wayfinding signage that Les is working on with the new greenway and everything, so that's going on there. Transportation Commission, the crux of that meeting on Thursday, although I didn't attend, was that they're working on the bicycle tourism thing, that that could be a big factor, an economic factor in the area, as we get more, we already have a great path system and it's getting better. So people are starting to be proactive and work on the bicycle tourism idea, and I think that's a good thing. And that's all I have.
Dan?
I have no reports.
Hey, Dave, John.
I'm going to be right behind you. The city of Moscow Human Rights Commission, pretty much business as usual, however, the Social Justice Forum, Faith in Human Rights, has been postponed until this coming fall. And then the Human Rights Commission at the Market will be on Saturday, May 28th, and the budget for the City of Moscow Human Rights Commission has been presented and to the mayor, to the city supervisor. And then the Tree Commission was pretty much taken care of, as far as the awards that were given. And other than that, Walter, I applaud you for being gone for a month and still having about eight minutes' worth of stuff today.
Okay, John, that ends your comments.
I invite you to stopwatch each of us, and I don't, I don't think I go the longest. If I'm talking about things that are not pertinent or relevant, tell me.
Mr. Mayor?
Walter? Take it easy, boy.
I just wanted to acknowledge, we got the email from Tim Davis on the recycling, and so the single stream update that he sent out this afternoon, and he had that there were 7.9 tons curbside recycling in 2015 for the same time amount of year, and now we're up to 178 tons, which is 124% increase, he wrote, with plus 80% participation. And I thought, right on, man.
80% residential participation.
Yeah, residential participation, anyway, so I wanted to get that out there.
Thank you, Catherine. I won't have to report that. That was very nice. Thank you very much. I'm going to go with May 7th, which was the opening of the Farmer's Market. Man, what a crowd down there that morning. It was amazing to see, very first day, it was so packed, you'd think it was the middle of the summer. May 9th, we had an airport board meeting, things are clipping along quite nicely there. May 12th, which was a fun day, we had the City Champs Awards, and we had employees from five years to 40 years receive various awards, this council was absolutely packed. There was nobody else other than myself, as far as elected official on there, so we didn't have any counselors in there. But that was a very nice event that day. May the 13th, we had, I went to the ROTC pinning and commission ceremony at the University of Idaho, as well as the commencement dinner. Walter was at the commencement dinner as well. And Art, and our three, yep. So that was a fun evening and very busy for all of us. So that'll turn over to you, Gary. You got any reports?
The only report I have is we are conducting interviews for Finance Director on Thursday, and hopefully we'll have somebody who can step into that role, but otherwise, we're working on the budget, and we hope to have something to you guys pretty quickly.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Opposed? We are closed, 8:24, folks. Thank you very much.